Go ahead and call the May 8 regular meeting of the Post Falls Planning and Zoning Commission Order. Will you please stand with me with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everybody again. If you could please make sure in silence your cell phone. If you need to take a call, you can step out. We'll go ahead with roll call.
Stephenson?
Here.
Carey?
Here.
Kimball?
President.
Davis?
Here.
Latham?
Here.
Bishop?
Here.
Campy?
Yes.
All right. Everyone has present and accounted for. Number four, amendments to the agenda. Do we have any amendments this evening?
There is none.
Okay. Ceremonies, appointments, announcements, or other presentations?
Nope.
All right. That being said, do we have any declaration of conflict this evening?
None.
Okay. Then that will move us directly to the consent calendar. Mr. Manley?
Yeah, item A is the minutes from the April 10, 2018 meeting. Item B is the bitten annexation file number. Actually, I'm not going to go through all the file numbers of each one of these, but it's bitten annexation. Item C is the Pheasant's Landing subdivision. Item D is the early dawn special use permit reason decision. Item E is the City Post Falls Parks annexation reason decision. Item F, the Haven North annexation reason decision. Item G is the Haven North subdivision reason decision. And item H is the Prairie Crossing West annexation reason decision.
All right. That being said, yeah, entertain.
I move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded.
Campy?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Latham?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Kimball?
Upstain.
Carey?
Yes.
Stephenson?
Yes.
Excellent. Moving along. Item number eight on tonight's agenda is citizen issues. This section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the commission on an issue that is not on the agenda. Comments on issues that are planned for future meetings and agendas should be held for that meeting. That being said, do we have anyone for citizen issues? Okay. None being seen. We'll move on to unfinished and old business. We have none?
It's done.
None. So that takes us directly to the majority of the meeting this evening, and that is our public hearings. So we'll go ahead unless anything else to add, Mr. Wilson? We're good to go? Okay, then we'll go ahead and open Plumber Forest Comprehensive Amendment. And I'll let you read the file number, sir.
All right. Yes, so the comp plan amendment proposed by Plumber Forest is case file CPA-002-2018. The owner is Plumber Forest Products, Inc. The applicant is Rand Wickman. The requested item is for a review and approval, or recommended approval, of the proposed amendments to a future land use map of the comprehensive plan to city council. The proposal is to change what's currently designated as industrial to residential on a portion of the property shown here. So just west of Spencer Street, we have Highway 41 about this location. Just a little bit west, you have Spencer Street, southeast way. So it's just a bit south on southeast way. It's where you see this hatched box here is the general location for the request. The actual request, all it does incorporate, I believe it goes to the western bounds of Potlatch Road to the southern right away of Third Avenue. You can see here that this industrial site is surrounded on the west, south, and east of residential with commercial to the north along southeast way with some commercial just to the east of Spencer. Currently, it's vacant treed property. Proposed comp plan is residential with it currently being industrial, about 18.5 acres. Both water and sewer would be provided by the City Post Falls. So when looking at this proposal, you would default to what are the policies in the comprehensive plan and does the proposal make sense when you're taking that in context of all the policies? So looking at the first one, that's being cited here is appropriate densities and land uses should be provided within walking distance from planned transportation nodes. So what I did in staff report and what I'm going to present here is looking at City Link for this and in relation to the site, I have the site highlighted here in yellow. There are two stops that are within a half mile. So to the west on Greens Ferry along southeast way, you see there about a quarter mile away, and then to the east near KFC and Capone's area, a little less than a half mile, you have another one. So you would have some alternative routes that are planned to help support development on this site. Also, looking at to encourage a balance of land uses to help Post Falls remain a desirable, stable, and sustainable community. So in the balance here, looking at the uses and whether it's residential, commercial, or industrial, are they being put in a location to help Post Falls be more of a sustain, fiscally responsible and sustainable community? So looking at, you know, going back to residential, the more we can potentially de-emphasize the demand on cars by accenting, augmenting or accenting residential housing with other old modes would help meet that policy point. Growth strategy should encourage infill development within the city. So having some designation, land use designation, that would help maybe facilitate infill development sooner rather than later would encourage getting growth more expeditiously. Most ordinary activities should occur within a walking distance of most residences, allowing a measure of independence for those who do not drive. I believe I commented this on the other policy points. Throughout the community, a range of housing types and price levels should be provided to accommodate diverse ages and incomes and provide effective, affordable housing. Now we don't know exactly what the end result would be here. What's being requested is just a designation for residential. Currently, that zoning district allows anywhere from one unit per acre to 18 units per acre, how it's in our conference of plan. So what we're looking at is, does residential make sense in this location? And typically, with residential uses, we do get a range of products. You see that throughout Post Falls. You get a bunch of diverse sizes and housing. So as it's being developed, more than likely you would keep the diversity going forward. Once again, we have encouraging fill development within the city. Looking at adequate land is available for future housing needs. So by designating this as residential, you'd be reserving some area land for some type of housing to be located in an appropriate location. Neighborhoods, a range of housing types and price levels should be provided to accommodate diverse ages and incomes. Went over that. The infill development in all neighborhoods based on policies found in the conference of plan. So it's a policy basically reinforcing the introduction that we're presenting some policies and however you determine is being presented, we need to be consistent with these policies. So moving on from some of the residential policies, looking at industrial. Industrial uses locating adjacent to existing residential areas should not create noise or air pollution and/or visual pollution as greater than the levels normally associated with the surrounding residential activities. So you're looking at it currently and being zoned industrial. Plumber Forest may or may not be there for perpetuity, but if they ever go to sell to some other industrial user, being consistent with this policy could prove to be fairly difficult. And if not, many industrial individuals looking to locate here may actually be fearful to invest next to all that residential that's surrounding it. Industrial development should be encouraged to locate adjacent to existing industrial uses where possible. So looking at, I mean, this is a fairly large site. You can concede that, but it is surrounded by a sea of residential. So once again, this wouldn't be a preferred location going forward for future industrial uses based off our current policies. There's avenues in West Post Falls and other areas in the city that may be more appropriate. Cooney County commented on the proposal. They didn't have any concerns. You don't have that in your staff report, but I did speak with Gerald today, and he informed me that he wouldn't have any issues with it going to residential. So I'd stand now. Do you have any questions for me with what's presented, what's in the staff report?
Anybody have questions?
John, just, it's not so much of a question more as it, as an existing industrial user there, I mean, I think the owner of almost all of that is, so there's a city park there, right? Is the skate park is part of the industrials?
Yeah, the skate park is...
Right there. The rest of it is pretty much, well, what used to be Potlatch Corporation, but now Plumber Forest Group. And moving forward, when we eventually sometime in the probably distant future redo our comp plan, would you see this as a focus or area where that would change?
I am looking at designating areas going forward because the purpose of a future land use map is where is this area going in the future? And it doesn't necessarily encumber zoning because once you zone something, you have vested rights in your zone. But it does enable that area to transition more efficiently if you can designate it appropriately on the future land use map. This area here would go through the public process and we would vet out, you know, issues pertaining to the coloration of the map. We have not gone through that exercise 100% at this point.
Okay. Is that something that we expect to happen in the fairly recent future?
I would think 12 months.
12 months, okay. That's it?
John, just point of clarification with a future land use map amendment, like what we're doing right now and to move that from industrial to residential, we are simply looking at that amendment. We're not discussing density, anything at this point.
Correct. And where that would be going is a separate land use action. So even if it's our, going from R1S to R3, those are the zones you could choose from. Any of those are going to have to go through a separate public hearing process before the Planning and Zoning Commission and city council. So, so like right now, we're just looking at the land use designation of residential. Does it fit into the policies? Does it make sense going forward?
Mm-hmm. Perfect.
And I had a question for Warren. Can you kind of walk us through a little bit the criteria that we should be using to make, is it just completely legislative here or is it, what's the criteria by which we should be making our decision?
So this is a legislative matter that ultimately the planning commission makes a recommendation to the council and the council based on their read of where they think the community should go and your input makes a decision. It's essentially a judgment call. We do think it makes sense to try to make sure that our comprehensive plan is consistent and cohesive. So that's the reason we've gone through the policy points because we'd ideally like to have that map match up with the policy points so that it's cohesive and works together. So to the extent that I can point you to anything, I would be looking at is, does this work as a whole? Does the change make sense versus the rest of our comprehensive plan?
I have a question as well. So the purple obviously is industrial. What's in the, I, obviously, we're looking at the one site that has the, so the rest of the purple, I know one part, I think the post office may be there, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. And then, so the whole other purple there is, that's zoned industrial, is that currently being used as industrial or is some of it vacant and some of it, what's the...
That's a, that's a good question. I actually wish I had the aerial up, an aerial to kind of show how that site functions. What you see here, this is surrounded heavily by trees.
Okay.
And it's pre-existing. And so most of the activity of the industrial is at this location. So I'm sure as these subdivisions have developed around it, this has already kind of already been here.
Okay.
But it gets mitigated quite, I would say, for this use, pretty extensively because of all the trees that are surrounding this property. Going forward, if this was, let's just say, developed as industrial, more than likely the trees would go away because...
But it's currently being used as industrial. So not if it gets developed as industrial, it's currently developed as industrial. But there's, but, but there's a buffer of trees around it that's, okay.
Correct. I was just kind of alluding to the, like, trying to answer, like, yes, it's currently being used as industrial. It may not be viewed or noticed, the general public may not know that because of all the trees.
Okay, okay.
And that going forward, though, if it stayed industrial, what kind of that implications could be, but...
Okay, okay. So, and we aren't looking to change anything with, we're only looking at the hatched part, the part that's in the, the black?
This is correct.
Okay.
Well, out to the western, this map's not 100% correct. It goes to the west, the western edge of Potlatch in the south line of Third Avenue.
Okay.
Approximately 18.5 acres, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, sir. Go ahead and invite the applicant up.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity, commission. I'm Mary Shaw. I'm here on behalf of Rand Wickman Planning. We are representing the applicant, Plumber Forest Products. And the request, as stated by staff, is for a comprehensive plan amendment from industrial to residential classification. This is the subject property. This request applies to the eastern half of a larger parcel. It's approximately 18 acres. The total parcel is 27 acres. And as you can see, the mill there is to the south. It's north of Third Avenue between Spencer and Potlatch. This is a little further out, gives you a better idea of surrounding development. And you can see I-90 to the north and the connections, all of the transportation, potential transportation connections. Do you have any questions about any of these slides either? A little bit about Plumber Forest. This property, this mill was purchased in 2010. And Mr. Brinkmeyer is here and he'd like to speak following my presentation. The adjacent property to the north, the subject property of this application was also purchased at a time, was intended for future expansion if needed. But since 2010, this plant's been doing spectacularly well. And actually, the first particle board plant in North America, I believe, to produce particle board using a formaldehyde-free system. Pretty impressive. So recently, it's been determined by the property owner that that property to the north is not necessary for future expansion of this plant, which is why we're here tonight. I have copied in this presentation the future land use policies that were covered in your agenda memo by staff. We believe that this property is much more suitable for residential classification and meets the intent of the City of Post Falls' future goals for residential development. I will not go over each one of these. Just wanted to cover them again in the slides. And we have had an opportunity, of course, to read the agenda memo, and we agree with staff's analysis. This is the subject property shown in the red star as it relates to road classification for future development and is adjacent to major collector. And as you can see, there's a signalized intersection there to the north. Apologize, my, I'm losing my voice here, so try not to talk, talk too much in a froggy voice. This is the recreation map from the comp plan for the city, and you were speaking about the skate park. It is noted on this map. Also, other parks within a reasonable proximity for residential development, as well as the Centennial Trail. It's important to have outdoor play spaces when you're considering residential, future residential development. This is a transportation slide that I took from the agenda memo showing the City Link B route and the proximity of the property in relation to the bus route. The current future land use classification is industrial. We are proposing residential. And as stated by staff, again, I'd like to reiterate, the surrounding development adjacent on the west, south, and east is residential. This is an aerial slide depicting the residential zones, the diversity in residential from manufactured housing, R1, R2, and R3. And the piece directly to the east of the subject property is zoned for commercial services, which would offer an opportunity for future development, for goods and services to be provided within a walkable distance for any potential future residents. This is a fun aerial that I found from 1998. Not much has changed. If you look back, it's pretty much the same. And as Rand Wickman put it yesterday, it may be time for a shot in the arm in this area for development. We believe that based on the analysis, staff analysis of the comp plan and our own analysis, the residential classification is far more suitable to this location than industrial as stated in the agenda memo and as shown on these slides. And with that, I will conclude my part of the presentation, and thank you for your time, and invite Mr. Brinkmeyer up. Did you have any questions before I go?
Any questions?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
My name's Todd Brinkmeyer, and I own Plumber Forest Products. I've lived in Post Falls since 2002. Been in the forest products industry since a long time. 1981, my family got involved in that. Sawmills first. I bought this plant in 2010, the whole 70 acres, 77 acres. The parcel in question is not contiguous to our plant. And in 2010, when I bought the plant, Potlatch had operated the facility continuously from the time it was built, 1975, until 2010. Potlatch, for some of you, may know this or may not. Potlatch was a big forest products company with mills, the old Coeur d'Alene Golf Course, the Rutledge Mill. So this plant was, was part of their integrated plan. They made particle board. But as that divested and they split up their paper mills and did what they did, this asset became non-strategic. And I was the last guy that they called, not the first guy. And it wasn't because the plant was doing well, it was doing terrible. Financially, it was a loss for Potlatch and, and they called people in the industry. Everyone declined to purchase the asset. I was lucky enough or foolish enough, depending on who you ask, to purchase the asset. Since then, we've done very well, and I have no intention of curtailing that operation. We're back there in the trees. We like that. A lot of people don't know that we're there. But we kind of have to change with the times and, and this direction for this non-contiguous piece is some of my motivation. We'll continue to be challenged by workforce. We have 82 people working at that plant with average wages of $70,000 and starting wages of $43,000 a year. $30 million in top line sales and customers in Canada and the United States. And like I said, I don't see that plant going anywhere for the time being. But 10 years from now, I've owned it for eight, 10 years from now, that might not be true. And the industrial people that I interface with are moving out by Jacklins or up to Rathdrom. They're not really thrilled with the prospect of being surrounded. And when that plant was built in 75, it wasn't surrounded. So those were the only points I wanted to make. I think it's important we do a good job in our community, do the right thing for the assets. And the railroad track is very important. We're the end of the line. Without that rail service, the viability of that plant would be in question. So we're motivated to fight for the rail line, fight for the plant, and fight for those jobs. And like I said, I don't see that changing. So that's my story. Any questions for me?
No questions?
No.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Refire. All right, public comment. We'll start out for those four.
None.
Neutral?
None.
Against?
None.
All right. That being said, we have no need for rebuttal. Any questions before we close? Questions for staff?
I have a question. I just was curious. The Centennial Trail, how does it, does it cross this property or is it, it stops before it gets there?
Yeah, it stops before it gets there.
Okay. Is there any way, I mean, is it a possibility to request a dedication or, or something of a portion across the, would it be the north section to continue in the future, the Centennial Trail?
Well, I need to clarify. It doesn't, it ends there, but it meanders kind of through some road network around this property. But as far as a dedicated trail section...
I mean, isn't that the goal eventually to have it a straight dedicated, the Centennial Trail, all through Post Falls?
There's been discussions regarding that. I've actually discussed that with Todd.
Uh-huh.
That would be probably discussed further as part of site plan review. If it was an annexation, maybe we could then deal with it. It's part of maybe conditions of annexations, providing trail and development. It's already in the city. It's a pre-existing site.
Yeah.
It's, wouldn't be germane to the, a condition to the, to residential. And then the zone change down the road, we don't do at this time conditional zone change. So then it wouldn't get encapsulated in that action. So then it would default then either to either a subdivision and/or a site plan review. We don't have that as part of a condition of subdivision approval to provide the trail. Could be discussed at that time, though.
Could be had or considered.
And then the site plan review, that's administrative, and that's probably more likely when staff would then engage with the applicant and looking at ways we can then continue that connection. Staff has the same interest as the general public at getting that connection made.
Okay. Thank you, John.
Any other questions? Nope. So we'll go ahead and close it out. Ray?
Yeah, it's, I, I do think that as industrial is relocating... Yeah, it's, I do think that as industrial is relocating out into kind of the further expanses of the prairie up towards Rathdrom, out towards Pleasant View in that vicinity, I think that it's, it doesn't bode well for the city to have this much industrial in an area that's surrounded completely by residential. And it's kind of a shrinking, it's a shrinking need in that part of Post Falls. I think we should be pushing industrial to an area that is probably more suited for it, which would be out towards Pleasant View. And so, and it's also the existing industrial user there is the applicant who is asking to change this, which means that they're not worried about it infringing on their own use. And that's a really important part, I think. With regards to the trails and whatnot, Post Falls has on their master plan a rough route through this area for a trail network. And that would be something that would be most likely addressed in the future as part of an action, a site plan action like John mentioned, in order to conform with that master plan. Same thing we'd ask for if there was a road expansion needed to whatever the transportation master plan said, the applicant would have to build a road to that specification. So I think it makes sense, and it's nice to see some, hopefully some growth in that vicinity.
Vicki?
I agree with everything you have said. And then also, as the applicant, like you said, is wanting the R1, and he doesn't have any plans to move the industrial use anytime soon, but if he did in the future, I would think that he would also probably figure that R1 would be the most profitable designation for that portion also. So I think it's a good fit.
And again, just for clarification, it's residential, so there's not necessarily density put on that yet.
Yeah, I'm sorry, residential. I said R1, yeah.
Just making sure.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
James?
I agree with everything Vicki and Ray said. I mean, I think it makes sense. Just vacant land, I mean, it makes, the applicant is the builder, it's not like some outside developer saying, I want to go here and throw apartments in there. So I think that's good. I think we're, you know, like Ray said, we're seeing the industrial go out to the outskirts of town and kind of shrink it in the middle areas here, so I think it's a good fit.
Mr. Latham?
Yeah, when I first looked at this, it almost made more sense to see it as commercial. And then you realize that the comp plan shows commercial to the east, but it's really mostly apartments that are over there. So it's really a residential use is what's been kind of evolving there anyway. And then there's really not any access onto Seltice Way. When you first look at it on a map, it seems like it, but it's not. It's pretty locked with the railroad track there and all of that commercial use. So it's really, the ingress and egress would be off of side streets, and so residential does actually make sense. And when that's developed, that residential people would know about that industrial use to the west, and so they'd be aware of that, or I would imagine they would be. So it's not like it's the other way around. It does make sense to me.
Sam?
I like the project. It's good. I'd always like to see more commercial in Post Falls, but this is, this is really ideal for this location.
And I'm going to agree.
Fantastic. I mean, yeah, if you look at the idea of residential with access to CityLink and access to CCS, it seems to make a natural fit. So it sounds like we're on the same page. So I guess my next question would be, does anybody want to entertain a motion?
Okay, I will.
Anyone?
Do you want me to go?
Sure.
All right.
Why not?
All right, here we go. So I will move to recommend approval as presented of the proposed plumber, plumber forest comprehensive plan amendment CPA-0002-0-2018, as presented.
Second that. All right, kind of motion's been seconded, roll call.
Stephenson?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Latham?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Hampi?
Yes.
So moved. All right, that brings us to public hearing number two this evening. We'll go ahead and open up the Holland Acres subdivision.
Lindsay King for the presentation for Holland Acres, owner being Timothy Stockton, applicant being Gordon Dobler with Dobler Engineering. The planning and zoning commission is being asked to hear the proposed subdivision and make a decision to approve, approve with conditions, or deny based on the six subdivision criteria that we will see later in the presentation and that are also found in your staff report. The project is located north of Horse Haven, west of Saringa, south of Pole Line, kind of locked back in a little neighborhood area. As you can see, there is a subdivision here, that's Yellowstone. So that's already approved, and this red hatching will be the proposed subdivision of Holland Acres. Currently, it's zoned R1, single-family residential. And you see in the purple there is some smart code, but that's on the other side of Saringa, so to the east. It's approximately two and a half acres of vacant land with grasslands and other vegetation, no significant topography challenges. Both water and sewer will be provided by the city of Post Falls. The property will be accessed from Yellowstone to north Mariah Drive, which will then continue on into the subdivision. As seen here, this is the preliminary plan for the subdivision. We have, Mariah is the street that will come up here. Towards the end of the subdivision, the applicant has proposed a trail connecting to Singing Hills City Park, which will be nice. They're proposing 11 single-family residential lots, averaging 7,600 square feet a lot at 4.29 units per acre. And as I mentioned earlier, with the extension of Mariah Drive and a trail to Singing Hills Park. There are six subdivision criteria that need to be met in order for approval. The first being a definite provision has been made for water supply system, making sure that they have a potable water supply and it can be provided to the subdivision. This will be provided by the city of Post Falls. The second one, making sure that there's adequate provisions for public sewage system and that the municipality can accommodate the proposed sewer flows. This will again be provided by the city of Post Falls, and as it's stated in your staff report, it can handle that. Number three, the proposed streets are consistent with the transportation element of the comprehensive plan. You'll note in your staff report that Mariah Drive is a residential street with connections to Yellowstone and Saringa. Number four, all areas of the proposed subdivision, which may involve soil or topographical conditions presenting hazards, have been identified. There have been no hazards identified anywhere on this parcel. Number five, the area proposed for the subdivision is zoned for the proposed use and conforms to other requirements found within this code. As I showed earlier on the zoning map, it is zoned R1, single-family residential, so this would then fit that criteria. Number six, the final criteria is the developer has made adequate plans to ensure that the community will bear no more than its fair share of costs. And this is done through impact fees, annexation fees, and capping fees upon building. So when they apply for their building permits, we'll tack on those fees there. These were the agencies routed for the proposed subdivision. We received no comments from any of the agencies. All other comments from staff, city staff, will be found within the staff report. I'll stand for any questions or comments.
Questions for Lindsay?
No.
No? Good, thank you very much.
You gotcha.
Go ahead and invite the applicant up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Gordon Dobler, Dobler Engineering. I have a brief half-hour presentation that I left at the office, so we're stuck at this little three-minute period. And I did want to point out a few things. Let me see if I can get this right, there you go. So first of all, this is an infill project, obviously, like Lindsay said, adjacent to the park. You can see that Kimberly Fields was already built to the south, and this Mariah is already built stubbed to the property right here, so clearly there was anticipation this project would be developed as infill. This is a view looking north on Mariah, that's Yellowstone that crosses this way, that's just giving you an idea of what that connection looks like. This is a kind of a panorama view, looking from the park into the property to give you an idea. It's just a vacant field right now. You can see the topography is flat, so that facilitates, you know, development. We won't have any edge condition, field slopes, or anything like that. Our backyards will back up to the adjacent backyards. And I wanted to show you this because this is where that future path will connect. We'll build it to the park, and then we're going to partner, actually with your Parks Department, to extend it from Yellowstone up into this subdivision. I don't think we can see it on this, but, well, yeah, you can. If you have really good eyes, you can see right here in this subdivision to the north, they've actually put in a path at that time, so it connects to, what was the name of the park, Lindsay? Singing Hills, all right. So we're going to connect this path, work with the Parks Department to build it from here down to here, and then our piece into there. Exciting. Okay? The rest of it is just, fits the zoning, surrounding zoning is all R1, so that's a fit. Some site data, Lindsay's already filled you in on that, average lot size. Some of the lots are a little bit bigger to the south because the northwest pipeline goes along the southerly boundary of this, so we had to make them a little larger to accommodate building envelopes, et cetera. We've already touched base with Yellowstone, there are no problems there. Typical road section is your standard 32 and 65-foot right-of-way, cul-de-sac, knuckles. Just a little quick look at traffic, obviously, they'll come to Yellowstone and go either east or west. We don't anticipate anybody going any further south than that because typically they'll drive to the nearest collector to get out of town, or wherever they're going. So you've got Saringa over here, and Greensberry?
Idaho.
Idaho, thanks. And Idaho over there. And of course, Pole Line to the north. So we've got the collectors, anticipated traffic, and the peak hour is 11, so you're one every five or six minutes. Not seeing any significant impacts from the infill project. That's it.
Questions for applicant?
No.
Thank you, sir.
Real quick, Gordon, do you have any concerns about the buildability of lots 9, 10, 11, with the easement going through, the backs and setbacks?
Closed. The answer is no. Let me see if I can...
Yeah, that's fine, that's all I needed to...
No, and are those the ones on the south side, Ray?
Those are the ones on the south side, yeah.
So the short of it is, is when we laid that out and looked at it, yeah, they're a little bit narrower, but on one of them, they'll have to put a little different product on because we don't have a ton of depth there, but it's definitely doable, we're working with the builder, so no, no concerns there, but good question.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent. All right, thank you. Public comment, any direction?
No.
Okay, no need for rebuttal. Any questions for staff?
No.
Nope?
No.
We'll go ahead and close it out. Open up for comment. Anyone?
I think it's infill, and it makes sense, and it's...
It's logical.
Yeah.
Move there, yeah, very logical.
I like the access to the park, it's great.
Okay.
Yeah, and it meets all the criteria of the subdivision ordinance, so.
James, good, yep. All right, then, look for a motion.
I move to approve, recommend approval of Holland Acres subdivision D-0010-2018, finding that is consistent with the comprehensive plan and adopting the findings of fact and conclusions and conditions 1 through 6 contained in the staff report with a requested zoning designation of R1.
Second.
Okay, move in second, roll call.
Hampi?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Latham?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Stephenson?
Yes.
All right, that brings us to our last public hearing this evening, the wireless communication ordinance. We'll go ahead and open that up. I believe, Mr. Wilson, are you presenting this evening?
I am.
All right.
We're all lucky. You more than me, I don't really like doing this. So we wanted to bring to you tonight an ordinance that we've been working on with a consultant for, say, nine months or so. Our wireless ordinance hasn't been touched in some time, I believe it was 2006, if I remember correctly. Since that time, there's been a sea change in technology and how cell towers function and how they need to be located and where they need to be located. Additionally, there's been a whole host of changes at the federal level and federal regulations. Typically, zoning is an area that's left to the state and in Idaho, largely to the local jurisdictions to decide zoning issues. Cell towers is a bit different. Cell towers are heavily regulated at the federal level by Congress has, there's several acts of Congress, but there's also the Federal Communications Commission has issued a number of orders restricting the ability of localities to essentially zone out cell towers. The concern being that some communities didn't like the aesthetics of cell towers, and that slowed the rollout of cellular technology, which sort of dampens the economy, and so the federal government has essentially taken it upon themselves to say, no, you have to comply with a number of orders that are frankly fairly difficult for municipalities to respond to timely. So it was time for us to revisit our code, make sure that we were covered, that we were complying with federal law, but also so that we were set up and prepared to handle the next iteration of cellular technology, which is small cells, which we're just starting to see rolled out now. So that's kind of the gist. Let's dive into the presentation. I'm going to stay sitting over here because I've got the ordinance, it's fairly thick. If I need to flip through, it'll be easier to do it here rather than over there. All right, so again, part of the purpose is to comply with changing federal regulations. I've got some handouts here, if we can walk through, if you want to know more about them. There's at least two federal acts of Congress. FCC has issued what's called shot clock orders, which is kind of an interesting term, but essentially, you have different amounts of time to process applications, depending on whether it's an application for a new tower, whether it's an application for amendment to a tower. So you're putting a new array on that tower, whether you're issuing a macro or a small cell, the times are different. If you don't process them timely, there's what's called a deemed granted remedy. Typically, if you don't process something timely, it's deemed denied. In other words, we didn't get it done, so it's considered that the city denied it. Just the opposite happens with cell towers. If you don't approve it, you don't process it in time, it's approved, period. So we've got that built into our ordinance to address those. Also, we've drafted this, we wanted to treat our area as a region. Both Spokane and Coeur d'Alene, their ordinance was drafted by the same consultant, were drafted in it with an item, really a region, and we're trying to make sure that, to the extent possible, our regulations match up. It's not always possible, our zoning districts are different, there's some different flavor in where one community might want a tower versus another community, but generically, the framework is the same between the three communities. Again, we wanted to prepare for the rollout of small cells, and important to us was making sure that we were coordinating with industry along the way. You should have in front of you a letter from Meridae, what is her last name, I'm forgetting Meridae's last name, Paps. She works for the Wireless Policy Group. She was working on behalf of Verizon. As we got a working draft created, we shopped it out to industry representatives and asked for their comments and solicited their input in the draft, and we've incorporated many of their issues into our draft. And so you have that in front of you from Meridae. I think you can see that they're largely supportive of the direction that we're headed. And then finally, we want to... And then finally, we want to make sure that we're protecting our interests. We want to make sure that we protect not only the physical safety of our community and where those towers are located, but also the aesthetic value. We want to make sure that, that they're put in an appropriate location, they're screened appropriately. We use what's called stealth technology as it's appropriate. So those are what our goals were, starting this process. So I'm going to handle this sort of thematically, as you know, it's like 14 pages long. I'm not going to try to read that to you, so I'm just going to try to go through this sort of thematically. And if you have questions, we can dive in a little deeper. So small cells, this is sort of where the industry is going. Their towers are smaller, they're not as tall, they're, they have to be spaced closer together, they're typically located in rights of way. We are allowing small cells, are proposing to allow them in all zoning districts. Those are typically handled through essentially a right of way encroachment agreement because they're, they're placed in the right of way. Often they're disguised or attached to a light pole. There are some exceptions to when they, that they may be required to go through a special use permit. But generically, they'll enter into an agreement with whoever owns the right of way to place those in the tower, or, excuse me, in the right of way.
Can I, before you go farther, is that kind of how?
Yeah. Trying to give you an idea of what that means.
What small means.
So here's, this diagram is actually produced by one of the, the small cell providers, it gives you a sense of scale, what you're looking at there. So typically they're fairly discreet, this one happens to be disguised as a light pole compared to a normal cell tower. So it gives you an idea, they're much smaller, less obtrusive. Here's a couple, some examples of, you know, again mounted on a Cobra headlight, another one is, I'm not sure what you call that, but the attachment at the top on that larger image, that's the, that's the antenna. So they're relatively small. As we roll out 5G and we look at to more, you know, data intensive uses, we're going to need these all over the place. So that's, that's kind of what we're looking at for small cells, and that's part of the reason that you're going to see them allowed in all zones in the rights of way is because they're relatively unobtrusive.
In order for them to work, they have to be pretty much everywhere too.
Yeah, exactly, you have to have them everywhere for them to work. So for new macro cell towers, the large towers, a special use permit will be required going forward. They have to comply with a whole raft of safety aesthetic location requirements that are located in the ordinance. We'll go through some of those in just a minute. And also, we're going to require that they allow co-location to the extent possible. I'll dive into that. So essentially, we're going to ask all new applications that when they build a new tower, that they're going to agree that they're going to allow other antennas to co-locate on their tower, trying to essentially make sure that we don't get a proliferation of large towers. And when somebody else comes in and they ask for a new tower, we're going to say, show us that there's not space on any existing towers to make sure that, that we are getting good usage of the existing towers before we put more towers up. We also establish a hierarchy of preferred locations, so when an applicant comes in and they want to put up a new tower and they tell us that they want to be in a residential zone, they're going to have to show us that all of the other preferred locations above that on the hierarchy, that there was no place that would work. So our hierarchy is essentially, first, to be located on city owned and operated properties and facilities, this would be like our water tanks. I mean, those are a prime location to put towers, and you see that across, across the country frankly. Next would be in industrial zones, moving down to commercial zones, then into rights of way in city, in residential areas, again trying to keep them out of the actual residential area itself. Moving into residential zones and finally into our downtown core as we're trying to develop our downtown area. Having large macro cells probably doesn't help that rollout. So again, they have to show us that if they're looking for a less preferred location, that it couldn't possibly work somewhere in a more preferred location. So, if I jumped too far, there we go, so talking about some of the general requirements that they're going to have to show us. First, when they come in, they're going to show us an inventory of existing sites to make sure that there's an actual need for the tower. And that also is information that we can then pass along to the next applicant to ease their burden in trying to find a location. If, if there's already a site analysis that's done, we can provide that information to the next applicant. There's some coloring restrictions, we want to make sure that they blend into the extent possible into the natural environment or the built environment. Lighting is restricted to that, lighting that's required to comply with FAA regulations for safety. Obviously, they're going to have to comply with any state and federal regulations as well as building codes. Typically, we're going to require stealth designs, which means you're going to disguise it either on a building or in a building, or you'll see the monopines occasionally being built. You're going to do something, and I should mention, if you're going to disguise it as a monopine, it has to be a species that's native to North Idaho. We don't want to see a palm tree.
Makes sense.
I've seen those and we don't want one. So again, if it's mounted on a building, it's going to have to be set back from the edge of the building, it's going to have to be hidden so you can't see it. Landscaping and fencing is required at the ground level to essentially screen that. The height of the tower is going to be dependent on the zone that's located, if it's in a residential zone, we want those towers to be smaller. So there's less of an impact on the neighbors, if it's an industrial property, obviously the tower can be higher. There's some increased setbacks for these uses, and also some requirements that if you're going to, you know, abandon that tower, that you're going to take it down. You're not going to leave us hanging with a derelict tower. I mentioned earlier some of the processing standards. We have set our processing times based on what the federal requirements are to meet their shot clock orders. So what's deemed an eligible facility, and that's defined in the ordinance, that comes out of, directly out of federal law. We have a specific application procedure to deal just with eligible facilities. We have a specific procedure just for co-location requirements, and a third process just for new applications. So that's, that's essentially the gist of what we're up to. I'm happy to answer any questions about the specifics, if you have them. I'll do my best to answer them, I will cop to it upfront, I'm not a tech savvy guy, so be gentle.
I just had one question then on that, from the letter that you gave us here from Verizon, on the cost here to review cost not to exceed $5,000, is that something that's possible, or is that feasible?
Good question, let me, let me explain that a little bit. Because these sighting of cell towers is incredibly technical. You're looking for essentially frequency updates or having engineers come in and speak to whether or not they got, they have sufficient capacity and, and also whether they're getting the right frequencies, whether there's, you know, backhaul capacity. Those are frankly issues that we don't have the capability of addressing. So we will likely contract with an outside provider to do those technical reviews, just because we don't have staff that is, you know, that works in that arena. I can't tell you that the $5,000 is going to be sufficient or not. The way I read Meridae's comments is essentially they think that that's what they're seeing. So my inclination would be to not limit it to the 5,000 because we just don't know. But if, if she's correct that that's typically what the industry is saying on a day in, day out, case, you know, case by case basis, we're going to be in that $5,000 range regardless.
Okay.
Would it be appropriate to have that as just part of our fee ordinance and that way, or part of our fee resolution every year? That way it gets updated as we know, or as?
I think we could do that after we have some experience. I mean, right now it'd be hard, I think I'd be hard pressed to say whether it's going to be five, or whether it's going to be seven, or whether it's going to be four. After we have some experience, I think with that, I think we'll be in a better position to maybe set a fee and update it as, as costs increase.
Don't we have, doesn't our fee resolution say, have a little blurb in there for reimbursable? Like for traffic, I think traffic studies are reimbursable, I think, based on, isn't that, isn't that correct Bill? I don't know. Maybe it's just ordinance.
Yeah, and we build into this ordinance based on, again, marrying federal law that.
Right.
We set it up so that, that they would reimburse us for the out of pocket expenses of the municipality and seeking those technical reviews.
Okay.
Okay.
The only other thing I had, Warren, was there's a couple spots in there where it talks about a setback from a residential zone. And I think we should clarify that to be residentially zoned property, because the zones can cross roads or be the center of roads.
Sure, do you have any specific sites?
I think it's 26.080.
Do you have a page number?
I'm sorry. No.
It's a long document.
18.26.080, let me find where that is.
If you can just give me the sites, I can find them. 18.26.
Preferred tower locations, is that where you're at? Yeah, page 14.
Page 14.
Preferred tower locations. Or says all new towers to be located in a residential zone or within 200 feet of a residential zone.
I see that one, okay.
That should, and then there's one, and same thing in 090 right down below it, that's the only two I, I found.
Okay, I'll take, I'll do another read of it and see if I can catch those.
But that might be good to just eliminate it at a property line instead of at the boundary of a zone, which is fuzzy.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
No.
Alright. Since we had staff report and applicant all kind of in one. There's no need for rebuttal. What are we looking for?
We had asked to see if there's anybody that wanted to testify.
Do we have anybody that?
No.
We have one guy out.
We do have one? We have time, we just don't have the paperwork filled out, are we, are we okay to be?
Yeah, we could fill out the paperwork.
Yep, after the fact. We just need you to come up, state your name and address.
Good evening, my name is Steve Schulte, I'm the Joint Use Administrator for Vista Utilities.
Okay.
In Spokane, Washington. So we currently are allowing small cells on poles in Spokane and a couple other municipalities. I do have a presentation, I don't know if you have time for it tonight, but I could present it anytime you'd like to about small cells, kind of what they are, how they fit into our usage on our poles. I don't know, I hadn't had a chance to read the ordinance, but did it, are you just, are you separating small cell from macro cells or are they just considered sites?
Uh, they're separate.
Okay.
They're treated separately.
Okay, so in, in Idaho, the Idaho Public Utility Commission has not specifically addressed small cell yet. So we're actually not obligated to allow them on our poles, but since we're dealing with the small cell companies in Washington, we decided we would allow them on poles in Idaho too, based on ordinances passed by the municipality. So if, if you would allow it, then we would allow it on our poles. We're only allowing one antenna per pole right now, we have 35 attached in Spokane from a company called Mobility, mostly on just wood streetlight poles. We have some steel streetlight poles that I just approved the other day, they're kind of expensive, they're about $12,000. They're, they're stealth technology, company called Western Utility. They're building a base that has all the radio equipment in it, and then the antenna sits on top. So I could, I could actually send you my presentation if you want to pass it around, there's a lot of really good information on there.
Correct.
What small cell is, why it's important, and why we're going to see a whole ton of them.
Did the pictures kind of depict that?
Yeah, pretty good.
Okay.
The small cells, you know, they're, they're, they come in all shapes and sizes. In fact, the latest iteration from Verizon, it may be where the industry ends up. It's a actual wireline attached antenna. So instead of being in the middle of the pole in the supply space or on the top of the pole above the supply space, it's actually a small antenna that sits where cable TV and phone normally are. It's a lot lower powered, so you wouldn't have to deal with the small cell antenna, it's just a small box that looks like a cable TV amplifier. So it's about five watts instead of 40 watts, which is what the mid pole antennas are. So you just have more of them around, we're dealing with them as if they were a wireline attachment. Those companies would just have to apply to a Vista to become a joint use company, they'd pay us a per rental pole fee per year and they could put their equipment up just like cable TV and phone do right now. So that wouldn't even impact the small cell, it'd be kind of small cell in a roundabout way. You'd have a lot more little transmitters instead of a ton of transmitters.
Rested.
Nice, thank you.
Great.
Yes, thank you very much.
So anytime if you'd like me to come back and present that, I'd be more than happy to.
Excellent, alright, thank you, sir. Any other comment?
Are we doing questions?
Yeah, do you have a question?
I just, on the residential zone, if they do plan on putting them up near a residential zone, will they have to notify the area, the residential area?
So if it's a new tower, it's going to require a special use permit, so they will go through that process, will notify all of the neighbors, have a chance to come in and have a hearing.
If it's an existing tower?
Yeah, if it's an existing tower, federal rules are different, so it depends. Typically, if it's, unless it's an expansion, I mean, I'm forgetting the percentage, most additions, we're not going to be able to do anything with that.
But that's just full tower, the full sized towers, the small towers.
Yeah, on a, on a small cell, those are going to be allowed through agreement.
Yeah.
With the, the pole owner and then with the right of way owner, essentially.
So no real approval has to go on with that, I mean, as far as?
It would, essentially it becomes an agreement, so council would approve an agreement.
Oh, okay, okay.
Warren, are you comfortable with the, this probably goes without saying because you kind of wrote it, but, or at least had a hand in it, but you're probably comfortable with the criteria that are kind of, that are laid out for special use permit and what a provider has to prove or at least present in order to get an approval?
So we.
Being pretty clear, I mean, I want to make sure it's clear so that us as laypeople who don't understand this cell technology understand what the criteria are so that approvals are pretty cut and dried.
We went through a couple iterations of what those criteria look like. The, again, these sort of coming from our consultant are based on what he's saying sort of in the industry and what people are asking for. I won't tell you that the first time we do this, that we won't be scratching our heads to make sure that we get you a good staff report that explains this, that's probably having the consultant help us through that process, because it is, they are a bit of a different criteria set than we were normally used to seeing.
Okay. Any other questions? Any comments? No questions, no comments, then I guess we'd be looking for approval of the ordinance?
Yeah, I would move to recommend approval to city council of the, I guess, well, whatever ordinance number it is, it's chapter 26.18 regulating wireless communication facilities, repealing the conflicting ordinances as an amending the, recommending an amendment to the designation of setbacks for residential zone to setting them back from residentially zoned property. And that's, that's it.
Okay.
My second.
Alright, got a motion that's been seconded, go ahead and take roll.
Stephenson?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Latham?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Campy?
Yes.
Alright, so moved. Exciting technology, although 5G does make me a little nervous, so we're going to have to all buy new cell phones now. Alright.
That's the plan.
That's the plan, so we'll go ahead and move on to the next item this evening, and that is new business. We have one item, urban renewal de-annexation. Mr. Manley, is that one you, sir?
Yes.
Alright.
With potentially help from others.
Alright.
So yes, there's a request to de-annex a portion of the East Post Falls Urbanial District. This map here is sideways, so north is actually to the left of the screen, and south is to the right. So here's where you see I-90 running east, west, and south, so it does get you a little cockeyed here looking at it. I think we, I think we're good. Admit that. And so what I have here in this red oval area kind of highlights the area that's being discussed here in the darker purple. It's on the east side of Highway 41, and the lighter purple is the remaining balance of the East Post Falls Urbanial District. So that kind of orients you to the district and the area being proposed for being de-annexed. So currently, the East Post Falls District is 469 acres. It was originally designated as a disadvantaged border community, that's what allowed it to become a district. 2002 is when it was created, and in 2012, it was extended to 2022. This allowed for significant utility and road extension. This allowed for significant utility and road extensions to be installed as well as going forward for more to be done. This, being that it's going to close in 2020, kind of sets up an interesting situation to where what do we want to have going forward and how are we going to facilitate infrastructure and improvements? The de-annexation will allow or help facilitate a potential new district to help mitigate some of those concerns, which would then bring consistency in the original formation of the East Post Falls District to help do job creation and complement development along Highway 41. These funds for infrastructure improvements go towards sewer, pedestrian, and street improvements and also potentially a new technology park for a potential urban renewal district, a new one. It, as I stated, furthers the original goal of the East Post Falls Urbanial District for supporting businesses. Looking at the comprehensive plan policies, in specific the economic development section of that, and how does these policies support a potential de-annexation? So policy six, sustain and enhance the city's fiscal stability through good capital planning and use of an array of financial tools to fund infrastructure and improvements and needs. And then policy 12, create identifiable business districts to promote, enhance, and redevelop in a manner that embraces community planning. Future land use policies, commercial policy number two, encourage off corridor circulation for commercial development with limited access points to arterial streets. And then policy one of the Highway 41 section of the comprehensive plan, recognizing the specific needs in preserving a state highway corridor by implementing the greatest, implementing the Highway 41 corridor to the greatest extent possible. Within the public services utility section, utility service policy number four, where appropriate, the city should use grants, tax increment financing, and other means to fund public infrastructure. So I want to go back to the fact that by de-annexing these sections, further, going back to further implementing, supporting businesses, we have ongoing improvements in infrastructure liabilities to support that and of which then these policy points then mirror the request for a de-annexation. This map here now is running north, south, up and down. In green here, you see the list of properties that are involved in this de-annexation and the taxable value, their URT tax, and the size of these properties. Diane Fountain from Urbanals here, if you want to have further discussions, maybe on the details of this, she's here, can probably explain what this means. So what we're looking for is to approve the resolution that you've seen in the staff report, finding that the de-annexation of the parcels listed in Exhibit A from the East Post Falls Urbanial District is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. So I'd stand for questions you have regarding the de-annexation process, the proposal, why we're here.
Why are we here?
Well, it was alluded to, this right here, the new technology park.
Okay.
And so, and the fact that the district's closing and the fact that we have infrastructure needs for this area.
Okay.
To begin with. So being that the fact that it closes in 2020 and it's 2018 doesn't leave a long lifetime to do some of those demands that are needed or necessary.
Okay.
So by de-annexing, it provides us the opportunity to create potentially a new district to further complement the original goal of the East Post Falls Urbanial District.
Okay.
So the entire district is being de-annexed?
No.
Just a section?
That was here where I highlighted, just those properties that you see here in the darker purple.
So?
And then I'll go back to this one. It's just these properties, 1 through 30, that you see here in the associated list in the table that goes with those properties. The remaining light purple area would still be in the district until 2022.
So what does the de-annexing do that triggers being able to create a new urban renewal district? Because I know there's only so many that can be, you could have at a time.
So?
I don't understand that part of it.
So part of the reason is to be able to make a new district with rational boundaries and to include all of the infrastructure needs that are needed for supporting growth of the technology park to the north, to make those boundaries make sense. Those boundaries are going to have to cross some of this area and it can't be in two districts at the same time.
Same.
So it needs to be de-annexed out of this before it can be added into a new district. You'll note that the valuation of this property is relatively low, it's not generating a ton of increment. So the downside to this for the existing district is pretty nominal. The district will still be able to sunset essentially on time. At worst, you're going to lose a tiny bit of increment, so maybe you close the district a month or two later than you otherwise would have because the amount that it's generating is so small. The flip of that for the new district is fairly, it's pretty necessary so that you can create a district that can fund mainly sewer infrastructure. There's a lot of sewer infrastructure that's needed on that side of town to serve that area. And including these portions in that new district allows us to put the infrastructure in a place that makes sense.
Warren, from a legal standpoint? Because that's the 12th Avenue lift station, right? This is what we're talking about, being the big part and the force main that runs from that lift station west to the treatment plant. Would any of that funding be able to be used for the force main or would it just be the lift station and equalization?
Likely just the items that are within the district.
Okay, so.
And you'll get, you'll get another look at this when a new district is created?
Sure.
This is an interesting process because under state law, we have to bring amendments to the district to you to take a look at it, see whether it's consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. In some ways, it's comparing apples and oranges, but it's a requirement of state code, so we're here. We have that same process to go through when a new district is created. So once, assuming we move forward with this process, you'll see us back again having another discussion about creation of a new district that includes this area.
What will this de-annexation, how will this de-annexation affect these property owners?
It won't affect the property owners at all. Their tax, the taxes that they're paying will be exactly the same before and after. What will change is those areas, the base will reset, meaning that at the time that the district was created, that their property taxes were capped, meaning that the city and the other taxing entities kept getting the same level of tax revenue from those properties as it existed in, whatever, I'm forgetting now the year it was created, 2001?
Two, 2002.
2002. So we essentially, the city and the other taxing entities have kept receiving essentially 2002 tax dollars. The difference between the 2002 valuation and the 2018 valuation was going to the district to pay for infrastructure. So when this, this area closes, that base will be reset. So for those properties, they're not going to pay more taxes, but the taxing entities will receive that difference in value, which you can see isn't a, it's not a huge amount of money.
So it resets the floor, basically?
Yeah, it moves the floor up. And then so, taking it to the next step, if we include this area in a new district, it'll be set at that new higher level. So all of the taxing entities will get a little bit more return from the taxes that are generated in that area, which is a good thing.
So if you do a new district, these could be included again in the new one?
Yes.
And then also, just from my knowledge, how do you make the decision, like you have a whole big district here, what partial, I mean, are these the ones that will give you the most for what you need, what you need them to go towards? You know what I'm trying to say?
Yeah, Diane might be able to answer that better than I do. It's sort of a, part of it is you're trying to make sure that you can include the areas that you need to include in the district that's partly what's driving it.
That needs the infrastructure work.
Diane, why don't you?
But you're also, part of this is also a financial equation because there are loans that are outstanding that are secured by payment obligations to the, to the, from the entity. And so you want to, you know, exclude as little as you can and so that you can still carry the, make sure that you're paying your obligations as you go.
We'll have you state your name and address. You have all the answers, so.
Oh, thank you. I'm Diane Fountain, Director for the Post Falls Urban Renewal Agency, 4218 North Siri Street in Quinlan.
Thank you.
So your question was?
I think there was a question as to why these properties versus other properties were chosen to be excluded or removed from the district.
Can we go back to your map of the district? The current East Post Falls District is all the purple.
Yeah.
And so that portion east of Highway 41, like as stated, needs a sewer improvement. And so that's why we're, we just need to de-annex those 30 parcels and leave the rest of the district as it is. The new district will follow the black lines around the blue over by the yellow. And then, can you tell where that is?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And so then that will include those for the new?
Those parcels again.
District, yeah, to help support that infrastructure. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and with the new one, then you'll be getting a bigger tax dollar to you, I mean, to use for the?
Once development starts occurring out in the tech park.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Correct.
Why are the districts so all over the place? Like, I mean, a district is usually a chunk, not pieces all over. I mean, I see that it connects, but it connects very?
Oddly.
Yeah, very oddly.
Because of the sewer line. The sewer line needs, do you want to address that with Bill?
So the, there's a sewer, a sewer line being proposed, it's a Meyer alternative. The sewer was originally planned to go down the east side of Foxtown.
Okay.
With the proposal of the tech park, there was a study done to find out, could this potentially run down through the center of Foxtown at this location rather than over here? So with that sewer study showed that it was plausible to facilitate that infrastructure through that alignment, of which though, there's a cost to that and how do you pay for that infrastructure? Hence then the ball bouncing to urban renewal going, okay, potentially an urban renewal district would be used to help get this infrastructure that could potentially assist the tech park that you see in blue. But also there's, I think, a school planned for out there in Foxtown to potentially with that sewer, we might be able to expedite the timing of that school as well. So there's other benefits of that realignment. So that's why you see the shape kind of being a little odd. Part of that also is, outside of this, we're looking at what's in the city and what's in the county.
Okay.
So, you know, Foxtown's in the city, that's in the city, this blue, that's all in the city. Currently, this piece here is in the county. And I would note this, that the black line is just a preliminary proposed, that black line?
That makes sense.
Could shift between now when we actually bring the district to you. Right. But, so that's why you see some of that, and in the pocket there, that's a county pocket, that's a county pocket, so.
Okay, that makes, that makes a lot more sense to me, that there is a rhyme or reason to it, you just didn't?
Yeah, we didn't just take a dart, have a crazy night with some darts and just go, okay, sweet.
Part of that's property ownership as well, where, because those are under common ownership. So you're trying to make sure that if you're bringing in a part of somebody's property and it's, they're all benefiting, we bring the whole piece in. And some of those are really oddly shaped parcels, so you get sort of a jigsaw puzzle piece.
Okay. That makes more sense, though, there's a, there's a reason behind it.
Yeah. Yeah, if you look at urban renewal districts across the board, you generally see some odd fingerlings that have a tendency to sneak out, so. Any other questions for staff? Diane Walsh is here.
I just want to make sure that, so there's no negative impact towards those property owners that are being de-annexed out of the urban renewal?
It does not affect the property owners at all.
Okay, and they would be for this de-annexation, the property owners?
I don't.
I don't know that they would be for or against it because it really has just no impact on them. They're going to continue to pay the exact same amount of tax dollars that they've always been paying. The only thing that changes is who's, who that's going to. Currently, it's going to the agency. After it's de-annexed, it will come to the underlying taxing entities. Until then, it's incorporated into a new, new district, then some of that would be going back to the agency, so it really?
So are owners notified and whatnot and?
There's a public process to create the new district, there is also a public hearing at the city council level from here. The code requires planning commission to take this step, but the public hearing piece happens before the city council.
Okay. So they are, but it usually doesn't really make any difference because it's, okay.
Yeah, it's completely neutral to them. It should be completely revenue neutral to them.
And the taxing entities will probably like it because they will be receiving more of the increment?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Makes a little more sense now.
So then I guess, are we looking for just a motion?
A motion to approve the resolution.
De-annexation?
I would move to approve the resolution for de-annexation.
I will second that.
All right. Roll call.
Hampi?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Latham?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Stephenson?
Yes.
All right, so moved. Would take us to tail end of the evening. Do we have any staff comments?
It's nice to have a shorter one.
I was just going to say, it's still light outside.
Yeah. Yes, absolutely. Any commission comments? No? Thanks again to the staff for the hard work that you guys do to assist in our jobs. If nothing else, then I'd look for?
Happy Mother's Day to the mothers.
Oh, there you go.
Thank you.
Looking for a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.